That's better. Good evening, everyone. Sorry we're a little bit late. Calling to order the Waterworks Board meeting for Wednesday, August 14th. The time is 6:36 PM.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I figured they knew that.
They do.
Mrs. Teal, could you do roll call, please?
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Tom Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney Dave Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Bob Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Dave Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormaz.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson.
Here.
NICE Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandor.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
And Recording Secretary Robin Teal, present.
All right, thank you. So, the Waterworks Board consists of three council members. Councilmember Robin Arvinitas and Rob Getzloff, both are absent tonight, so you're stuck with me. We don't have a quorum for this meeting, so we're not going to conduct the Waterworks Board meeting. But what we are going to do is move the claims to next month's Waterworks Board meeting. That would have been approved tonight. David, anything additional I need to say?
Please direct the Clerk Treasurer to discern the claims that are present and which need to be paid between now and then. Place those back on your agenda for next month.
Okay, we'll see if that happens. Okay, moving on. Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 14th. The time is 6:38 PM. The Redevelopment Commission exists of the entire council. And also our advisor from the Lake Central School Board, Nicole Kelly, is here with us. Good evening, Nicole. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of the July 10th, 2024 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 3-0. Claims. I don't believe there are any additional claims, Mr. Gorman.
No additional claims.
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any reports from staff on redevelopment?
No reports.
Okay, council members. Okay. Okay, we don't have any old or new business. I'll take business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call a Utility Board meeting to order for Wednesday, August 14th at approximately 6:40. The roll call stays the same as the redevelopment with Councilman Getzloff and Councilwoman Arvinitas absent. Items and minutes of the July 10th public meeting from the Utility Board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Claims for Utility Board?
No additional claims.
Motion to pay the claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Reports. Mr. Gorman, any reports on utilities?
I do have one report. I just wanted to report that the Biosolids Building down at the wastewater treatment plant is well underway to be replaced. Half of the, on the north side, has been demolished and the sequence, the next sequence in that would be building, the new building, and then demolishing the south side and then building the south side. So that, that is well underway and it's right on schedule as moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Mr. Nandorf, any reports from Public Works?
Nothing.
Can you give us a quick report on the, we get a lot of calls on the utility company that's, that's putting utilities. Is that, that might be Internet?
Yes, Surf Internet is the company that recently bought in everything in the Auburn Metals subdivision. They've already did Stonebridge earlier this year and they will be pushing into Lakewood Estates in the next couple of weeks. I haven't signed off on the borrowing permit application yet, but that'll be coming. And if there's any complaints from any residents in those neighborhoods about restoration or cleanup, I have a contact with them, call Public Works, let me know the address, let the secretaries know if I'm not there, and I will get that reported to them so they can take care of any situations that arise.
And that strictly has to do with Internet service?
Yeah, that's a new fiber provider for high-speed Internet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other reports from staff? Any reports from council members?
No.
No reports. We have no old business and no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor? Yes, please state your name.
Jeff Minar, 1279 Poppy Field. I'm in Auburn Metals and they, Surf Internet's been through there. I think they've, so far they've been doing a phenomenal job repairing what they're doing, so.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor regarding utilities? Business from the floor. This meeting is adjourned. We'll meet, we'll move right into the Town Council meeting. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, August 14th at approximately 6:43 PM. The roll call stays the same as the Utility Board, and the first item on the agenda is the minutes from the July 10th public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0. Claims, Mr. Gorman, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Reports. We'll start to our left. Mr. Hanson from IT. Fire Chief Bob Patterson.
Yes, I just want to report for the month of July, Fire Department responded 271 EMS calls, 98 fire-related calls, for a total of 369 calls for the month of July. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Deputy Chief Dave Meyer.
Nothing to report, sir.
Police Chief Pete Sormaz.
Nothing to report tonight.
Deputy Chief Steve McAmmar.
Just wanted to take a moment and thank the Parks Department and Public Works and the Town Administration and Town Council and everything for our national night out we had on August 6th. We appreciate it and everything, and also the citizens too for showing up and coming out and support us. We really do appreciate everything you guys did for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Nothing to report.
Our Town Engineer Neil Simstad. No reports, Mr. President. Public Works Chad Nandor.
Nothing to report.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
No reports.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
No reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any reports from the council?
No.
Okay, we'll, we'll move right into, is there any public comments regarding agenda items? Is there any public comments regarding agenda items? No public comments. We'll move right into the old business. Item A is consider acceptance of the conveyance of property to Town Hall, Police Station, and Court from the Building Corporation to the Town of Sheroville, Lake County, Indiana, to authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, Clerk Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize the execution of documents. This was deferred from July 10th, 2024 meeting. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I'm going to defer to our Attorney Austin, who handled that meeting.
The Sheroville Building Corporation Board of Directors met today. It was a notice meeting. It was held for the express purpose of catching up the entity formalities of the entity itself and addressing the transfer of the property owned by the Building Corporation back to, or in reversion back in ownership, to the Town of Sheroville. In 2002, when this building was built and the police station was built, the financing method chosen was the Building Corporation lease-purchase financing. That caused this to be able to be built in a budget that was sufficient to make all the amenities correct and, and the details for the project were brought together. Well, we've paid off those bonds. Bonds were issued on that basis. They've been paid off and now you're looking at other possible uses of the Building Corporation entity as the downtown of Sheroville continues its reemergence and development. It also was unnecessary for the Building Corporation to continue to own the property. It is the taxpayer's property and financial advisors have encouraged that this occur. So with that, the Board of Directors met. They unanimously approved the revert of the ownership to the town by and through the Town Council, and that is what is before you now. So the Town of Sheroville Lake County Indiana Municipal Corporation becomes the owner of the property.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions. This is a real nice thing to happen after 22 years.
Thank you, Mr. Austin, for the, any questions for Attorney Austin?
No.
Not at this time.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It should be noted, Tom Kouris, President, Kathy Stone, Vice President, and Robin Teal, Secretary, served the entire 22 years on that board and were present. Kathy was not here today, but she's been in communication with the staff and they, they really deserve credit for the longevity and the marathon that this became.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Teal.
Thank you.
Next item is new business. Item A is consider acceptance of professional services. I'm sorry, David, were you done?
Is there a vote, a motion, a second to vote?
Yep.
Yeah, there was.
Okay, thank you.
New business item A, consider acceptance of the professional services with Peterson Consulting Services Incorporated in amount of $4,050 for the capital asset report for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Peterson Consulting prepares the gateway summary schedule for the town's annual finance reporting to the State Board of Accounts. Some of these include the town's asset additions as well as retirements, completed projects as well as land acquisitions. So they, they manage our, our, our services for, that they do for us. Looking for your approval tonight on that. It, it went up less than $100 from last year, so I thought that was pretty good.
And Mr. Gorman, this is work that's done at the clerk's office?
No, they do it on, they, they do it for the clerk's office, but they do it at their location.
That's what I mean. I mean, they're doing work for the clerk's office.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Item B is consider a variance of use to allow a private, by appointment-only, tattoo studio within the US 30 Commercial Corridor Overlay District. It's a boarding, border zoning case number 24-7-10. The petitioner's Element Private Studio, Joseph Goriluski, I hope I, I hope I pronounced that right. Location is 6400 West Lincoln Highway. It came with a favorable recommendation by the BZA 4-0 with the conditions. Subject to this location only, subject to this petitioner only, and subject to the petitioner, Joseph Goriluski being the only tattoo artist providing tattoos at this location. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Goriluski is here tonight and he's looking to go into the office space at the old Animal Hospital on Route 30, just east of Ariel Landscaping, which is now home to Cliffs Heating and Cooling. It came with a favorable recommendation of, as you read, 4-0 from the BZA and if you have any questions tonight, Mr. Goriluski will be happy to answer any, or myself.
If there's any exterior signage, how large will that be?
The, the space isn't too, I think it's right underneath Cliffs, so it's, I'd say it's probably about this, this high.
Okay. That's the only exterior signage that you'll have?
I'll have whatever, whatever my, like, once I, once I make like a, like a logo, whatever that'll be, it'll probably be on the window.
Other than that, like, the actual words, Element Private Studio, will be on like the, the signage, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
And, and that's the new sign that Cliffs has there? You're, you're going to be part of that sign?
Yeah, I would be, I should, I think right below Cliffs.
Okay, thank you.
And what, I'm sorry, I apologize. I should have spoke up quicker. What are your hours, just so we know for a, a public standpoint? You're not tattooing in the middle of the night?
No, no, not at all. I'm noon to eight. So my last form is at five. If I get done early, I leave early, so, yeah, noon to eight.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
And, and I guess I got one more question. How, how long have you been in business?
Uh, well, I've just celebrated 16 years tattooing professionally.
Sir, can you speak into the mic, please?
16 years professionally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, motion to approve Board of Zoning Appeal, approve variance of use to allow private tattoo studio within the US 30 Commercial Corridor Overlay District, Board of Zoning Appealing, Board of Zoning Appeals Case 24-7-10, including all of their findings of fact and their recommendations. Subject to this location only, subject to this petitioner only, subject to this petitioner, Joseph Goriluski being the only tattoo artist providing tattoos at this location and per the representations here today that the advertisement will be limited to just the one signage that he's referenced here today.
Findings of fact.
And the findings of fact as found by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Item C is consider approval of the purchase property located at 1217-1219 the Avenue Sheroville, Indiana from Steve A. Sadowski in the $211,750, which is entire property, and to authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, Clerk Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize the execution of documents. This is part of the Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Mr. Hanson?
Um, yes, this is directly across from the Public Works Department. This is part of Kennedy Avenue Phase 2. It is parcel 7. That is the purple area located here. It's the entire parcel. Uh, this will allow for an intersection improvement, so this will actually be the intersection of Junction Avenue and Kaiser Boulevard. There'll be a traffic signal installed here. Uh, this amounts based on the appraisal as well as a partial compensation for a recent roof repair they had to do because there was a tenant in there.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Item D is consider approval to purchase property located at 378 West Division Street, Sheroville, Indiana from Z&amp;B Properties in the amount of $5,500 right-of-way in temporary easement and to authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, Clerk Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize the execution of documents. And this is also part of the Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, this is also for Kennedy Avenue Phase 2. This is parcel number 20. Uh, it's right on Division Street. It's this small purple parcel. It's for right-of-way only. This will also be for an intersection improvement at Division Street and this will also allow for utility relocations to occur. This was based on the appraisal amount.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Item E is consider donation to the NIC Foundation for the Great Gold Rush Race 6.0 in the requested amount of $2,000. Uh, Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a donation request that came from the Northwest Indiana Kennedy Kids Foundation. Uh, they requested $2,000. It is the same figure as last year. It went in front of the donation committee and they approved it.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Second. We'll take a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
I just, I, I have trouble with these donation requests. Um, I don't know. I'm going to vote yes, but I don't know. I'm struggling.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Getting all kinds of them.
Mr. Schmidt, yes. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Item F is award bid for the Iris Lane Water Main Replacement Project. Mr. Simstad, our Town Engineer?
Mr. President, the Iris Lane Water Main Replacement Project, we opened bids on August 9th. We had six bidders. Engineer's opinion of cost was $373,200. The lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder as recommended is to Rex Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $296,750 and zero cents. Any questions?
Uh, for the public, tell us where Iris Lane is.
It's, uh, it's south of Phillips, north of 73rd, and west of Bur Street. And this is an area that prior to the development of that subdivision had a stream running through it and there was some corrosive soils. And we've had in excess of 15 water main breaks through that area. And this will be correcting that issue from the past.
Very good.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to award a bid under the direction of our Town Engineer to Rex Engineering.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0.
Mr. Schmidt, if I could interrupt you, um, I, I just realized that during reports, we skipped, um, Mr. Reardon.
Yeah, I, I caught that too. I was going to bring it up, yeah.
I was wondering if we could do that before donations?
Yes.
If that's, uh...
Yes. We have a report from Mr. Reardon, who's been working on our Iliana project. And, and Mr. Reardon's going to give us an update of what's gone on in the last month, yeah.
Thank you. Um, we continued to conduct internal meetings. Uh, we, we met with the Fire Chief, Police Chief, Clerk Treasurer, and circled back and spoke with the President of the Sheroville Baseball and Babe Ruth. Additionally, and thank you again, Andy. Andy facilitated our attending and presentation before the plan commission. And we continue to meet with groups, organizations, frankly, anybody that has an idea that we could bring to the table that ultimately could be considered and incorporated into the, into the project. Uh, as we last reported, we had, went ahead and hired local firms to handle geotechnical, environmental, and wetland reports at the property. Those site visits are done. The geotechnical report is, is finished. We have a wetland map presented to us. Uh, and we expect the wetland report to be handed in within the next several weeks. Additionally, the environmental report is nearing completion, like the wetland report. We expect that to be completed and, and turned over for review within the next several weeks. Um, we've also met with staff and, and have had demolition firms out as well as paving firms out. The reason is to establish a number. If the ultimate decision is to, actually, it has to do with ultimate decision about the track. Do we keep the track? Do we not keep the track? What's that number? I think that's a valuable piece of information to have. So we continue to work on that. Um, our, our management office remains in place now here in Phase 2. And, you know, we continue to meet with the Town Administrative Staff. Uh, that's, that's typically accomplished through Zoom meetings, but if I need to talk to Andy or Jim, it's by phone. Very open line of communication. And last, we, we completed our interviews for a design firm and were talking with staff and look forward to making a presentation to the council at its, at its choice. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Reardon?
No.
Thank you. I would say though, I think we just talked about a study session, right? The 28th of this month. So I think you're going to come back then. Yes, that is correct, sir.
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Jim, for catching that. I, I had thought about it also too. The next item is a consider acceptance of donations for $9,414.45. Mr. Gorman, would you have the pleasure of reading those?
Sure, I could do that. Okay, for Donation Fund Town Hall offices, we have an in-kind donation from Jerome Sims, Forest Square Construction, a dozen donuts, $1,299. Uh, Reliance Roof, Roof Troop, two dozen donuts, also in-kind, $40. PKS Construction, Dunkin' Donuts, a dozen donuts, $14.02 for a total Town Hall in-kind donations of $67.01. Uh, Donation Fund to the Parks from Janelle L. Van Kukken. Donation for a bench, DeVries, $1,400. Lori K. Bath LLC Hocus Pocus Candy Drop on, uh, July 19th, '24, $100. Total park donations, $1,500. Um, to the Perry Farini Park from Anthony Mitsick. Dog park bench donation, $1,691. For a total Farini Dog Park donation of $1,691. To Animal Control from AES Restaurant Foundation. Arby's fundraiser in March, $2,202.53. Anonymous Miscellaneous Bowls, an in-kind donation, $5. Anonymous Miscellaneous Cat Items, $20. Anonymous Blankets and Dog Toys, $35. Yatsko, or Catso, Blankets and Towels, $60. Yatsko, or Catso, blankets and towels, $60. Anonymous cat food cleaner, dog food, $95. Tets, pet, and pet feed, dog food, collars, leashes, miscellaneous items, $800. Total monetary donations, $2,202.53. Total in-kind donations, $1,015 for a total animal control donation of $3,217.53. That was page one. Page two, National Night Out, Kelly Law Offices, $100. DC Jones Engineering, $100. Energy and Wellness, $100. Dick's Sporting Goods, a toddler bike, $99. Dick's Sporting Goods Basketball, $24.99. Dick's Sporting Goods Soccer Ball, $14.99. Rave 911 Sunglasses, $207. Rave 911 Lanyards, $205.50. Rave 911 T-shirts, $14.74. Rave 911 Whistle Light Keychain, $105.80. Total monetary donations for National Night Out, $300. In-kind donations, $672.02 for a total of $972.02. To Vip's Sherreville Police Department, anonymous donation, $20 for a total of $20. Willow Fund Gerald and Kathy Simoniak, $50. Sherreville Police Department Ted's Feed Store fundraiser, sponsored by Sensible, I'm sorry, Sensible Heating, $566.50. Total Willow Fund donations, $616.50. For the Fire Department, from Patricia Hanson, Charbroil Grill and Accessories, $350. For Fire Station Number Two, for a total of $350. For the Police Department, Dicky's Barbecue Pit, a catered lunch, $480.39. Karaba's Catered Lunch in Kind, $500 for total police in-kind donations of $780.39. Total in-kind donations, $3,084.42. Total monetary donations, $6,330.3 for a grand total of donations of $9,414.45.
Well done, Jim.
Thanks.
Motion to approve donations.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome, Mr. Troxel.
We have a motion?
I second.
Second. All in favor, say aye on donation.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll open up to the floor. Is there any business from the floor? State name and address, please.
Kevin Dean, 1905, Sir Richard Road, Sherreville. Really hard to say no to kids with cancer. I totally understand that. My long hair in the back here is not so much a fashion statement as it's many times in the past I've had it cut off and the care donated to kids with cancer. Since it turned gray, they can no longer use my hair for their wigs, but they are able to sell it for a profit. So I can understand trying to say, trying to give money to kids with cancer. I have an argument with you taking tax dollars and using them for these donations. I'd appreciate it if the Town Council would try to refrain from using our tax dollars for things outside of Sherreville, and if you're going to use the tax dollars, do it for things inside of Sherreville, such as having EpiPens available at all of the parks and schools in the, in the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Other business from the floor?
Good evening. My name is Dean Johnson. I live at 7412 Forest Ridge Drive. Oftentimes, I come here with complaints, but today I'm not coming with complaints. My councilwoman, Robin Avridis, isn't here right now, so my prayers are with her, but I came basically to thank her and to the departments that have been working along with her in regards to some issues that I was having there in Sherreville. Your Parks Department, Public Works, I think they were out, and the fencing behind Burr Street, they've been mowing that and weed whacking. It looks fantastic. Prior to that, you know, it's kind of a little, you know, ghetto, but it is really fantastic. So I want to thank you. The other thing is, I live in Foxwood Estates, and we don't have an HOH. So therefore, I was trying to find out who takes care of our entryways, and Robin shared with me that it is Public Works. So I want to thank Public Works for coming out and doing the weed killing for the entryway. The one on 75th, it's just a little more work. There you go. But the rest of them look fantastic, so I want to come and thank you for that. Now, I'm always here to bring bad news, but I'm here to thank you for the work that you do. Also, in regards to the donations that you give, I'm with them 100%. I listen to all the donations in kind and monetary that we receive in the town of Sherreville from other avenues, and I would think that this town will continue to be a good neighbor when it comes to giving to other entities, foundations, and such. The other thing I want to say, you know, I have a pet peeve when it deals with aesthetics. I love businesses. I'm glad that we can get businesses into the town of Sherreville, but the same token, I go beyond signage and all of that. I like aesthetics. I'm concerned about the landscaping. I'm just concerned about the, how they keep it up once it comes. And oftentimes, the businesses come in, but aesthetically, it doesn't look appealing. And so I'm one that everything's about the eye, the perception, and when businesses come in, I would also like it if you guys would kind of, you know, like, let them know, be a good neighbor. That means aesthetically, your businesses should be appealing. Don't come in to make money, but then aesthetically, you know, it doesn't look great. So I'm concerned about that. The other thing is, I don't know, there are quite a few subdivisions that are coming in here in Sherreville, and I applaud it 1,000%. I'm hoping, as I shared with Robin, I'm hoping that the new subdivisions that are coming in have HOHs, because as I stated, Foxwood, we don't have a HOH. So therefore, I'm concerned about how the aesthetics, how they would keep it up. I've been here for 26 years. 26 years ago, Foxwood looked fantastic. Well, the same folks that live in Foxwood when I moved here 26 years ago don't live there anymore, so houses have been turning over and everybody doesn't have the same quality of care. So that's what I want to say again. Thank you, guys, for the great work that you're doing, and I hope to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In the name of Jesus, good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Gorman. Nice meeting you and council. My name's Dennis Hunter, and I'm a veteran in the United States Army and a former Department of Justice employee, and I've come to bring to you guys, it's a club, and we're worldwide, and I'm trying to introduce it to Northwest Indiana. It's called Experience, the Smart Money Club. And the newest thing we have is a wealth mentorship program, and it's for the youth, but they open it up for everybody, and it's expert instructors, and they teach you online about Bitcoin, stocks, cryptocurrency, it's a lot of things, new stuff that's coming up, and they're teaching us about this AI and everything. It's a good course and everything, and we need to all know about this. Also, we have wealth, we have health and wellness products, and me and my brothers, the whole family, we are veterans, and our doctors at the VA, they use our products for their parents and their children and everything, because they're gluten, they're organic, and they're gluten, organic, and vegan, and these products, they love. And so with some things that we got, it's like a gumball of things. We have vacation packages for an individual, for a family, for groups of 10, 20, whatever. We have vacation packages, and the prices can't be beat. So it's a lot of things that we have that we're trying to introduce to everybody to make everybody's life better, because a lot of people complaining about this and that, and there's a lot of deaths going around, but this club has a lot of things. We got a Cash App, and you can go to like AutoZone and Applebee's or whatever, and you get a percentage back. So the club is giving you a lot of things, and I just wanted to introduce it to Northwest Indiana, because a lot of the states, we go to there, we go to those states because they have more people in it, and we're trying to get Indiana into it also. So that's what I come to introduce it to you. And I have business cards, and we do presentations to large groups, small groups. We'll come to your home, we'll come here, whatever. So it's spreading, and we're just trying not to leave Indiana out.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any more business from the floor?
Hi, my name's Georgianne Glavis from Logan's Love. Most of you know me here. I just wanted to thank the town for everything they've done, from the parks to the police and fire and everyone for allowing all the events that we've had, and I just want to invite you to our autism walk this weekend on Sunday at Roarman Park. Proceeds from the event are gonna go continuing with Project Lifesaver, or continuing with Ben's Blue Bags, and also bringing Project Lifesaver to enhance what you guys already have going on. And then we have our golf outing in September as well, which helps us continue with the free sensory events that we provide for people with autism and disabilities. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor? No further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.